Thank you, everyone, for your patience. We'll reconvene to open session resolution at this time. For a policy review, next step, steps, staff report from Chief Administrative Officer Ian Watson. Thank you, Ian.
Thank you, Worship, and thanks to council for indulging in a review of yet another staff report related to either policies or bylaws. Just to refresh folks, last time we had spoken, we talked about the bylaw review process and that you had appropriately asked us to bump up in priority sequence those policies that are, or sorry, those bylaws that are specific to council operations. So we've done so. We have time on that later today, actually, later this evening. But that said, this is your first look, though, at results of applying a policy that we approved together. So the intent here is for you to have time for broader, deeper, long-term conversations and decisions about policies and to provide staff with both latitude and boundaries for where our responsibilities lie versus where you want to rest with the responsibility resting with you. So, you know, I don't feel the need to walk through the staff report step by step unless you're interested. I'm certainly happy to speak to them, any of the points there. I would say, though, that this was not a willy-nilly exercise on staff's part. We did undertake a review of the entire policy inventory for the town. And then, after having done so, we prioritize those as important and urgent, important but less urgent, less important but urgent, and less important and less urgent in decreasing order of priority. And we also separated those into two broad categories, which is really subject to the discussion this evening that I think would be helpful for us. And that is to determine your comfort level with which policies are appropriately remaining with council and which are appropriately left with staff to administer. And I offer that because I'm really wanting council to have time, to spend time, on the bigger picture stuff and to not need to worry about things that are within the day-to-day operations of the town. Now that said, I would be quick to offer that if council is comfortable with any policy being with administration, in other words, the authority for that policy would remain with administration. It does not remove you from oversight to the overall operation of the town by virtue of the budget process and by virtue of my commitment to you, to come to you if I feel a budget pressure emanating from a policy being administered or if I think there's public risk associated with a policy being administered. So I wouldn't want you to think that the effort here is to separate completely, but rather to clarify. And you can think of a few policies that are probably on the list here already where we're recommending administration approval authority, like anti-idling of municipally-owned vehicles. I mean, I'm not sure I want to use council's time reviewing, amending, approving changes to those policies, but others, like the approval of a budget process, like community grant process, like asset management, like financial signing officers, those are absolutely and appropriately within council's purview. So I think knowing that this is your first time, you're seeing this and having opportunity to discuss, that's why I welcome the discussion in committee of the whole, recognize it as a little less formal, and appreciate that we'd likely follow the same process, that if you're comfortable with what you see, we can certainly move to approve in our main session. But if you think it requires some more discussion after the end of this evening, we can certainly bump it to May 20th for further discussion and hopefully ratification. So with that, maybe I'll all stop and certainly invite conversation about where you'd like us to go next.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Counselor Bigger, please.
Thank you, Worship, and thank you to our CAO and staff for working at this. It's very easy to see that some hard work has gone into trying to create a more streamlined, efficient operation. And I think that that's good all the time, but especially timely, I think, for us currently as a town. I think this is a great piece of work, and I really commend you on it. I, pardon me, I'm, I'm, I think you, I appreciate your comments regarding sort of the nuance that not everything is just completely cut and dry, and it'll be a bit of a living sort of process to best appreciate whether or not everything that, for example, exists under administrative authority is, you know, duly placed there. But for my part, I'm prepared to make a motion to adopt this, so I would move that Committee of the Whole recommend to council, under business arising, policy approval authorities as presented and amended, excuse me, Caesar Chicken, and that the CAO be directed to immediately begin the resulting review work. Further, I move council make policy review update a standing Committee of the Whole agenda item unless and until council-approved policies are completely updated. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Bigger. We do not need a seconder. So on the question, Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Worship, on the question, I'm interested to know if any policies were added or any policies have been removed from the list.
Thank you, Worship, through you, to Deputy Mayor Schreier and other members. We collated the entire list of organizational policies as we could find them. And frankly, that in and of itself was a bit of a task, to make sure that we had all of the policies of the town of Quiz Pam Sis in one place. And I say that, speaking electronically, in one file-look structure within our electronic files, that was a bit of a job. So kudos to staff that did undertake that. That was mainly Lisa and Linda Cormier that undertook to collate that stuff, but with support from other staff, for sure. So with that, with that list, that is what we took to then prioritize and rank and separate in the way that you've seen. It's possible that we've missed one. I don't think we have, because we've been through it a couple of times. If we discovered one that was lurking, that we weren't aware of, we're happy to bring it into the mix. We did identify some areas where policy direction probably is required, where it doesn't exist today. And I believe we have added a few that would fall into that category. I wouldn't consider that an exhaustive list, though. I would expect we will see more net new by virtue of this process.
Thank you. On the question, please vote. Motion carries six zero. Thank you. Item four B, proposed code of conduct bylaw number zero six eight, review and discussion, staff report from the Chief Administrative Officer.
Thank you, Worship, and although I'm happy to turn this over to the clerk, who has been highly instrumental in this work, we're now entering Christmas light colors here with respect to our track changes. And I invite just a bit of final discussion here, but I think we're really quite close by virtue of the good conversations we've had previous two meetings and have made resulting changes for tonight's meeting in green. So what you see as edits in both blue and red, you have seen before and have been comfortable with, but pieces that are in green are new and are largely reflective of three main themes that I'll just summarize for you. First off was to respect Counselor Lux's recommendation that once a matter is deemed to have merit by an informal group of, or a smaller group of council, in other words, a complaint is not about to be dismissed, that it would be automatically referred to an outside third party for review and report. So larger municipalities do have this in their bylaws, for sure. Smaller ones are more likely to allow for internal review by a committee of council that struck at the time. So there is a mix within New Brunswick, but certainly we have built in the language to reflect Counselor Lux's recommendation there. We also have a reduction in the allowable notice for a complaint to be filed. First, it was thirty days in our original. We had moved it to sixty. We heard the feedback that maybe the middle ground is somewhere where we should land, which actually does line up with notice periods and other bylaws of the town. So we're suggesting forty-five days there. And then also, and finally, to incorporate the principle of progressive discipline, which was not there in the past, which had escalating sanctions for similar repeat offenses by the same member within an eighteen-month time span. Eighteen months being a fairly typical time span in the labor relations world for similar matters of progressive discipline. So there may be a couple of other items that are of interest to council. I would suggest we can likely accommodate a couple of other changes, after which it would be our recommendation to move to first and second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. And certainly, as far as hiring or having a legal counsel, past experience with code of conduct brought us to that stage, even though it wasn't in the bylaw, it was a recommendation from local legal that we hire and went that route. So I'm happy to see that it's now in writing. So next in queue is Counselor Bigger, please.
Thank you, Worship. Perhaps it's just a bit of a language issue here, but on the tenth page of the draft bylaw, item five, results of investigation, point A under that starts, "The third party or committees' results of the investigation, et cetera, et cetera." What committee is that referring to? I believe we've established that there would not be actually a committee by virtue of this update. Is that correct? Am I wrong about that? It seems that we're not making a provision anywhere for a committee of council to be an investigative body should any investigation be required. So am I correct about that? And then I just have a quick follow-up.
Thank you, Worship. Through you to Counselor Bigger, I think you're correct. I don't see how you couldn't be correct there, but I'm hesitant to say absolutely until I look at the whole thing, but I think you're bang on. So unless folks see or feel otherwise, it would be our intention to strike that out.
Okay. And the only other thing I just wanted to say to follow up on that is that I'm not personally completely satisfied with the notion of removing the capacity for a small committee of council to be commissioned or struck on matters to be investigated, but, I mean, I certainly will vote accordingly, I guess. I think that we've benefited greatly from the insight and, you know, counsel of our legal counsel. There have been times when that's been required. But I don't, I don't personally believe that it's always necessary, and I believe the CAO referenced himself, that smaller councils, of which we are one, are not always, they don't always move in that fashion. Perhaps that's a reflection of the times we live in, where this sort of thing is more necessary. Perhaps it, there's a sense, maybe, that it mitigates the likelihood of people questioning the integrity of whatever the decision process is. I'm sure it's only in good faith that anybody is motivated to move to this proposed way of doing it, but personally, I just want to voice, I'm a little disappointed to see us go completely into that sort of binary kind of reality. So I'll just leave that, I'll just leave that there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. Next, Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, Worship. I just wanted to, I actually picked up on the same, I thought it maybe was a typo because it was there before the last round of changes, so the five, five A, I had questioned the same, same thing. It seemed like it was redundant or just an oversight because of the changes. And just wanted to bring up, I guess, my comments around Counselor Miller's point is, one of the reasons why, I'm actually just looking at the email that I sent to CAO Watson in terms of kind of why I felt it. And I just said, I think putting council members in a position to investigate their peers could put our town and counselors at risk since we don't have the skill set, the expertise, or lack of bias to do so. This also has the potential to be perceived as a, you know, a witch hunt, and again, I'm just, in terms of the perception out there, or could create a not-so-great working environment. So that was kind of my concern about if council did do an initial review, because I, you know, again, my feedback for this was that if after an initial review it did feel that the complaint was a valid code of conduct complaint, then to protect the town, to protect the counselors, and to do, I guess, due process, an unbiased process, you know, to then, you know, source it out to someone that has that expertise and skill set to properly investigate, I felt, in an unbiased way, I felt would be the best way forward. So anyway, that was kind of my mindset when I gave that feedback to Counselor Watson. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Luck. I don't see any other questions. Just on that, I think it is quite important for there to be a peer review because I think it gives credibility to those who are elected to take the opportunity, if they see something that is inappropriate, to have that discussion, and it may not go any further than that discussion. Previous experience would have had the mayor and deputy mayor and another counselor look at the evidence that is in front of us, and then we would proceed with that information. If it is valid and if there is reason for allegations against a particular person, then it goes to legal, and I think that is the appropriate way to go about this. This is, this was put before us in twenty eighteen, in July of twenty eighteen. It became, I guess, a bylaw here in November of twenty eighteen, and it has worked. And we've proven that it's worked, and it was without any kind of contention or misgivings. So I think that there is a role for the mayor and deputy mayor and another counselor to play in this. I'm not saying to take it to the full extent of the law, because we are not experts in that, but certainly to present the evidence to legal, because we have to do the footwork in order to bring that forward if we leave all of that investigating for a lawyer with the, with the time that, at the time I was deputy mayor, and I had two counselors work with me on that. If we had hired legal for that, it would have been an enormous sum of money with the work that we had put into it. So I would have to disagree. I think that there is a place for council at that point. Counselor Luck, I'm going to go to Deputy Mayor Schreier first. You were next in line, but I'm going to go Deputy Mayor Schreier, and then I'll come back to you.
Thank you, Worship. Just on this, my, I guess my, what I'm thinking about is sometimes it depends on the nature of the complaint and how severe that complaint is, or how grievous that complaint is. And I don't want to pit one against the other, but, you know, one might take, definitely, that's legal, that's expertise that we don't have. And one might be, oh, yeah, we can solve this in just conversation. So that's why I'm a little worried that we've taken it out altogether, because it, depending on the nature of the complaint. So maybe there's a happy medium here that we could come to, depending on, like I said, the nature of the complaint. If it's really grievous, then absolutely, and that would be determined by council as to whether the nature of the complaint deserves for it to go to third party or if they think it can be resolved within a committee, which is my, my.
Thank you. Counselor Luck, please. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Your Worship. And I think, I think in terms of what Deputy Mayor Schreier had just said, is I think that that's kind of how it's written now, is, you know, it would be council that would then decide if, like it says, you know, in terms of council would look at it, and, you know, in terms of deciding if it could be dealt with. I'm just looking at the kind of the process. When I was reading it, that's kind of, you know, I was trying to kind of go through it, thinking, okay, let's look at different scenarios and how this would play out. But my understanding of how it's written now is that, you know, if a complaint came in, I mean, council would be looking at it, and if it gets to, if it's to the point where they feel like, okay, this can be either resolved informally, then it would be. And then if not, then we're talking about sanctions potentially, and that's when you say, you know what, this is not the role of us anymore. We should really, out of just due process of the person and, you know, being accused, then we say, we're going to let the experts do that to protect the town, to protect the counselors, and make sure that, you know, it's an outside source doing kind of the investigation. So I guess the way I see it written, I think it, you know, kind of covers those concerns because council ultimately has that decision to kind of look at the complaint and decide if it's serious enough, or if not, they can still kind of make a decision. But I guess I just worry about having a smaller group of council investigate their peer. That's really my biggest concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments, concerns? Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Worship. Through you, I just perhaps reinforce that notion that Counselor Luck mentions. It's, I think, captured on page nine, where the sub-bullet is E, and it's suggestive that depending on the nature of the complaint, council, in other words, all of council, may, after its initial review of the complaint, may either dismiss, determine that it's best dealt with informally or dealt with formally. If the answer is it's best dealt with formally, then Counselor Luck, your suggestion is that that's the trigger, at which point securing outside counsel or outside investigative support is appropriate. It does not take away the option for internal informal resolution, if that's, if that's council's wish.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Counselor Bigger.
Thank you, Worship. No, I appreciate the CAO's clarity on that. I just happen to disagree with it as the total suite of options that I believe should be available to us. I believe there is, I believe the distance between those two points that have just been outlined is too far of a distance. I believe there is nuance, and as the deputy mayor points out, certainly, the whole ball of wax is the severity, let's say, of a complaint. But I happen to believe that we are entrusted with the stewardship of multimillion-dollar budgets and the vision and values of a fast-growing town. And I think we make critical decisions all the time, and I certainly don't, I don't live in a Pollyanna-ish kind of world where I can't imagine someone operating as a dishonest broker in the process of something that's very dramatic and very intense and very emotional. I'm considerate. I'm trying to be considerate of other counselors and say, I would want for myself and for anyone else to feel that they are being treated fairly and with the best objectivity that can be afforded. But I don't believe that by virtue of something that is not an informal issue, that that de facto makes it something that requires outside third-party involvement to resolve. Thank you.
Thank you. There is, there are a couple of options available to you. Counselor Thompson.
I'm trying to which, figure out which one. There's Committee of the Whole refer council, the draft code of contact bylaw number sixty-eight as presented for consideration of first and second reading under business arising. And the other one is pretty much the same, isn't it?
But there's May twentieth. That one would wait until May twentieth, if we look at the second option.
Oh, okay. Then I guess I'll go with the second option. Does that make sense?
It's been moved by Counselor Thompson, that Committee of the Whole refer to council, the draft code of conduct bylaw number zero six eight, with additions for consideration of first and second reading at the May twentieth, twenty-five regular meeting. We don't need a seconder. On the question, Counselor Luck.
Thank you, Worship. I just wanted to, I lost my train of thought. Oh, I'm going to have to, lost it.
Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Worship. I might be able to pick up where Counselor Luck left off. I'll try, anyway. In that, appreciate the conversation and with recognition that we wouldn't be bringing this forward for first and second reading until the twentieth, staff just needs clarity about what you want in this, so how you want this to read. So that might require some further discussion, and I'd certainly turn that back to you in terms of the timing, the format, the manner in which you wish to have that conversation, but I just, I'd feel badly if we were bringing back the exact same question on May twentieth.
Thank you. Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, Worship. Thank you, Mr. Watson. That was actually my question. And I was going to say I concur with Deputy Mayor and Counselor Bigger on that it doesn't always have to go third-party right away, that there could be, depending on the severity, there could be an intermediate area. So that's just, I just confirm with, confirm with those two as well. Thanks.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
So Mr. Watson's looking for direction. So would I be right in saying, from what I've heard around the table, that perhaps some type of wording regarding that section be brought forward to council for consideration for the next meeting? Is that enough direction? Is there any, on that, on that piece, anyway?
Could you repeat that again, please?
That Mr. Watson bring back wording to reflect the concerns of Counselor Miller, myself, and whoever on what that would look like, that hybrid, let's put it as a hybrid solution to go into informal complaint.
Okay. So, so the question was, or the comment was to take Counselor Miller, Bigger, and Deputy Mayor Schreier's concerns of not necessarily going to third-party legal and to allow the committee to make that decision. Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Worship, through you. I appreciate the conversation, for sure. We can bring both options back. And as a side-by-side, you can have some conversation, final decisions at that time. If there are any other minor changes that are indicated, now's a great time, although we also have now a bit of time until the twentieth. So the same process could apply. You could send in email comments to me and Lisa if there are other, other minor bits that you pick up on over the next few days. Thank you, Worship.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. There was one that I had picked up on, six A, I, 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 B, requiring that a member attend training or counseling as directed by council. And although we cannot force that, the cost of that, I believe, should be taken out of the, out of the person's stipend. So if there was a counselor that was required to take training or counseling that is not paid for, take training or counseling that is not paid for by, by accountant, by the taxpayer dollars, it would be taken out of their stipend. I will go to...
Thank you. Just a point of order. I'm just, I, I need to know where we are in the process here. I believe we have a motion on the floor based on the two recommendations that were offered. And I don't think we have any reason to not go ahead with a vote on that. And I wonder if a clean vote up or down on that option two would provide the CIO some direction by virtue of how a majority vote comes down on what might be the best way forward. As it stands currently, and as was mentioned by Counselor Miller, if we vote in favor of option two by majority, then what we've really said is we're going to wait a couple of weeks and then come back around to it. I understand that we're discussing on the question some items that could be referred to, but we still have this motion on the floor. And so we're still going to have to vote on it as it's read, as it's worded currently. So I just would like to point that out.
Good point, Counselor Bigger. Thank you for that. So we will go to the vote as it was read. And if there are any further, if there's any further input by council, we'll go to that at that time. Counselor Luck, we're going to go to the vote. Please vote. So, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Your Worship. So if we vote yes, then there's no more changes. If we vote no, then, then there could be changes. I'm trying to... Oh, then it'll come back with the changes. Okay. I just want to make sure that that, okay.
That's, that's what... The motion doesn't say that.
Yeah.
So if I vote no on this motion, in my heart, what I'm saying is, I need a different, I need a different code of conduct to vote on. This option, as I read it, option two, is not reported. Oh, with additions, okay.
Yeah.
But is that with additions to be considered, or with the additions that have been added?
Additions for consideration.
So we're voting both in favor of, with the yes vote, we're voting both in favor of... Continued reflection on possible changes and waiting until the twentieth to make a final decision.
I'm going to go to Mr. Watson as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. And maybe just in the interest of creating the perfect motion here before voting on it, I appreciate the comment. I, I see where there's nuance there that could be misinterpreted four years from tomorrow. So that's, to my mind, the signal to go back and say, okay, let's, let's make sure this is as tight as we can make it. Would, and, and one suggestion to consider that, as long as the clerk and, and council's okay with it, would be to suggest that the with additions, the with additions received by the clerk and/or the CIO prior to May fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, which gives acknowledgement of tonight's discussion, as well as any further email swaps that happen between now and the fourteenth.
May twentieth.
But we would need time to get it ready for you. So we would need comments back by May the fourteenth.
The procedural bylaw, you have it May fifteenth, so it might make sense to have it the same day. For the next one, you have changes by May fifteenth.
Oh, fair enough. Okay.
To have it on the same day, so.
Thanks, Counselor. Yeah.
Okay. On the question. Please vote. Motion carried six zero. It, it's... Okay. Item number C, procedural. Oh, if this is on the code of conduct.
I guess we were having on the question, and then you said that you had to vote for the vote, and we were going to come back to discussion.
Can we discuss something after it's had a vote? I thought not. So... Go ahead. Go ahead, Lisa.
I'm going to clear the vote for that last motion, and we'll redo it, because Counselor Luck also had an issue with that. So I don't know what happened there. So I'm going to clear it, and then we will redo that vote. I'm going to reread the motion for everybody. Committee of the Whole refer to council the draft Code of Conduct bylaw number zero six eight with all the additions received, oh, sorry, with additions received before the May fifteenth deadline, I'll add that, for consideration of first and second reading at the May twentieth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting.
On the question, I, I was told that we had a hard stop at five fifty, but if you, can we do one quick question? We can come back then after the meeting.
Can we vote on?
Yes, we need to vote on this. So on the question, although Counselor Luck did have a point that it was an opportunity for her to speak further to it. So should we carry this until after our open session? But, but it closes her ability to speak to it, though. Okay, so we're going to freeze that at this point in time, so Counselor Luck can speak after, and we will come back. So could I have a motion, please, for adjournment to open, moved by Counselor Olson on the question? And this is with the idea that we will be coming back after open session. Please vote. Did you go to number two, Carrie?
Oh, what?
So we're voting on the adjournment, not on... Okay. All those in favor of adjournment, please raise your hand. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. And we will be back here at six. Don't forget to reset your...